The number E, um re- did I read number E correct? For Campus Edge we're talking about. He just gave us the report on Campus Edge. E on the agenda. Uh and I read the report from the final report from Campus Edge, one through. I highlighted one, well not all, one through eight, but there's enough one through eight. In reference to have the same impact uh that we've been talking about. He went out there to do a check to see if they're gonna move people in.
Hold on, we got a motion on the floor. Uh we didn't, you mentioned, but that wasn't yours though, we've asked him for clarification.
Yes, I had a puzzled look on her face.
She did have a puzzled look on her face. I did not hear Mister Underwood say that these were in non-compliance with city ordinance, which is what's required under this section. So at least some of them he didn't, so I think your numbers may be incorrect when you say one, four, six, seven and eight.
Number eight is not in compliance with their own written Senate, I mean Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which is required. The Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan is required, they have one, but they're not in compliance with it.
Okay, is that the only one under the city ordinance that they're required to comply with, which they haven't?
Uh some of the other, we just haven't been able to determine.
But you can't tell them that they're in non-compliance, like at this point, because it was too many.
I can tell them that on number eight they are in non-compliance with their. Well, now the ordinance requires that they have a stormwater pollution prevention. They have them. They're out of compliance with the one that they were.
So that puts them out of compliance with the ordinance.
So we just needed the one, right? Alright.
So you wanna restate your question, cause you stated.
Oh, I stated all of them, okay. Um I said they uh. I I moved uh that.
I'm sorry, with the motion on the floor, let me carry it, uh unless you withdraw it.
Well, the clear, well, did did I?
So we can let it die, we can just let it die.
Not gonna just clarify the numbers, numbers eight, and then it'd be good. For the 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 items listed in the tr- the Trilogy Report, under number eight, and then that's good. For non-compliance.
You have to resecond that, uh Randall?
Yep, second.
Okay, uh you've heard the motion that item number eight is. In non-compliance within the material term condition or requirement specifically of the city ordinance. You've heard the motion, ready for the question?
Question.
All the favors, aye? Motion passed.
Question, has Kemp's Edge been given, is to give occupancy?
Yes.
Mister Mayor, I I thought we said that there was no cert- COs gonna be issued to Campus Edge, that that goes back to you?
Barring barring everything being in place and the recommendation from.
From who?
Who you directed, Bureau Veritas.
You just said they have no reports.
They issued the reports, what you talking about?
You just said, say, you said Bureau Veritas didn't have anything at this moment. No, no, for for this. Trilogy just said that they weren't able to do the things they needed to do on Friday. So who gave, who gave you the, so again, we, our profi- our professionals, he's saying right here, so we'll we'll let him speak. Our pro- our professionals. Our professionals gave us recommendations, and you said you were gonna follow those recommendations. Who gave you the recommend, who suggested to you and provided you information that it was okay? For you and your, with your power and authority to sign off for a CO for Campus Edge, the development that we said we weren't gonna do that you sat. And told the people that you weren't gonna do. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Bureau Veritas's engineer, David Peter, hold on. Trilogy Trilogy Engineer David Peters, Bureau Veritas, uh the fire, I forgot their fire inspector guy. Hold on, hold on. If you stop interrupting.
You're right, that's still really.
Yes, and so Bureau Veritas, Miss Danielle Rogers, issued the Certificate of Occupancy Approval. The Trilogy Engineer David Peters, who went out there, said that these couple of things that you just heard from. The city engineer were not out of ordinance, and the fire person for life and safety with Bureau Veritas. They all signed off on the fire safety reports, the certificate.
Where's those reports? You should be able to provide us those reports right now. Your day to day job is to, is to do what we asking you for, and we've been asking for twenty-four months. How you gonna, we gonna have issues around the hill, and you gonna come back and then do the same? You're right. The same thing you sit here and lied to us about. You said you weren't gonna issue any COs until you came back to us. Then you sit here and say all these people told you that it was okay. When did they tell you this? On Friday? Where's the report?
The report is with the permit in file with Miss Cortez.
You can get that for us right now. It is what you do, that's your job.
That is not my job.
You can go get that, go get it for us right now.
What, you know how to print it? Go print it, and we can go review it. It's in the system.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
This is an issue, Mister Mayor. We keep doing the same thing. You say that you love these citizens of Purvey so much, Mister Mayor, and we going back into the same cycle that we just. We hadn't even completed one mistake in which we just went through doing the same exact thing. You signed off on it saying you trusted experts, and we find out twenty-four months later. That no experts have signed off on this, and the man had just said that number eight doesn't. With our ordinance doesn't match up, and you say that Trilogy Engineer Services said that nothing is out of compliance. The man just said that the item number eight is is out of compliance, and so you bring back no reports to us to say. You knew that this was gonna be on the agenda, we've been talking about certificates of occupancy. As you would like to say for twenty-four months, and you didn't bring us nothing to state that, hey. This is the reports in which we got back from the city's experts, so this is why we have signed off, this is why I have signed off. As the zoning officer on on these apartments. Like, you don't see that we continue to repeat ourselves?
Let me go see if I can't get what I received in writing, that it are subject matter experts that you all assigned. Approved to issue a COO.
Trilogy, uh Mister Underwood?
Yes.
And the report of what you had today, and I'm pretty sure you talk to your partner all the time. Did he say that it was okay? Well, the mayor just stated that nothing was out of ordinance, so you paid us that something was, so. What would you guys vomit?
Number eight is out of, is out of.
So should, so the que- the the question is. Does, based upon your report, that you say number eight is out of compliance? And uh is that a, should they be issued a certificate of? Okay, I can't, I'm the the chair.
So what you're looking for is the determination that you guys made on the last one. Is whether or not they're in non-compliance with a material term condition or requirement of the ordinance, so that's what you need is testimony. Is number eight a material term?
Uh, Councilman Wallace?
Is is number eight a material term?
I I, you know, I don't, I'm not exactly sure what that even means, material terms, I don't know what that means.
Uh is it substantive and important, and whatever you think it is, explain to the council and I'll make that determination.
And let me just, in my, in my attempt to answer that question, let me try to explain what I believe happened. I know David Peters went out there Friday, I believe he did have a conversation with the mayor. I believe that David Peter did not deter, did not believe that having silk string fences. Should avoid people from being able to move in. That's what I believe David was thinking in his head. It is not in compliance. But is it out of compliance to the point to where people shouldn't be able to move in? I think that's what he was thinking.
So, Councilman Wallace, or Councilman Randall, and then do I get to ask a question? Uh my my question is that, based on one through eight. You said that the, I mean, when you go through these, you talk about um. Them not having, like not drawings need to be more specific on drainage flow and all these things that speak to. There's some state requirements that yourself and Mister Speeder, Mister Peters spoke to in reference to. The impact flow on other another development. That's a state requirement. So do they meet, do they meet the state requirement?
The drawings don't even show which way to.
That's correct, and so now Mister Wallace? Can you ask your question?
Yes, sir, so. And I would have many more subsequent questions for Bureau Veritas as well, and we still gotta get to you as well. Um so like I said, we're working backwards, so we know that certificate of occupancy has has been given. The thing last time was that the mayor stated that he made mistakes. Because he felt, you know, he felt that things were ready, so we talked about the asking, okay, well, let's get everything done. And have everything correct before we move forward this time. Why, why such a legitimate repeat of last time? Why would you just certificate occupancies without ensuring that all things are, all I's are dotted and T's are crossed? So I guess outside of eight, um what is the severity of some of the other things? Cause even though we may not have ordinance for it, right, we may not, but there's a couple of things that we still gotta shore up. What is the severity of some of the other items, whether it not being fully completed, or you're not sure um if it's been completed or not?
So I spoke to number one, I don't think there's a severity issue associated with that. The road is not as shown on the drawings, but the road is out of. Uh number two, I I think this is a function of the fact that we're trying to piecemeal uh certify. The site is not complete, correct?
So that's uh, that's what we need, that, but, okay Mister, can you? So so the question is, so the question is, you said the site is not complete. So why would we give people the certificate of occupancy when, based upon the state requirements? In reference to the ro- runoff on the drainage, that they don't meet compliance? Right, cause they they impact, they're not on the drawings, they're not on the drawing.
Correct.
There's a state requirement that you can't impact anyone's drainage runoff.
Yeah, I I wanna try to answer this this way, just, cause I wanna be clear about, I I don't, this is not a call I'm supposed to make. I could come up here and tell you right now, they are out of compliance with fifteen different state, federal and local laws. And the mayor can still, if he chooses to.
We're not asking you to to verify that, we we want.
I thought your question was, should a certificate of occupancy be given? That ain't my call.
Right, no. The question is, you talked about the fifteen things that are out of compliance. Is example. I I, the question is, we're not asking, because you don't issue the certificate of occupancy. But the, what we've been trying to state to everybody is, we wanna be very fair from the experts. This project is, is, you've got this project from the beginning. You said you had issues with the drawings, you couldn't read it, you still hadn't got the recommendations. Are you saying, as a city engineer, that you would rec- that? That the project, based on your experience or your company's experience, is okay to move to the next phase? That's what we wanna know.
It's okay to continue with construction, is it okay to issue certificates? I I don't think so.
So, so, so let me, so let's continue.
So those are two different things, sir, just because, so they're doing this thing in phases, they got building one, two and three ready, they still got four, five, six, seven, eight, nine to do. That part of the site clearly is not ready for occupancy, it's under construction.
And so I wanna clarify, because even though we asked, was a certificate of occupancy given? I mean, he didn't specify which building it was given, so whether it was one to three or whatnot, I mean, we don't, we don't know the answer, right? But I still want you to go down, um and Councilor Lannigan is going down. Uh from one through eight and talking about the severity of it.
So let me just be clear on number two, I don't think that that's such an issue such that you couldn't do a CO, CO on it. To be honest, we really just don't know. We don't know what it's drainage, we don't know whether it's, it's obviously gonna run off, the water's gonna run off. There's an absence of knowledge here for us to make an educated call on that. There's an absence of knowledge on that.
I think not knowing is just as severe as knowing that it's wrong.
But when you, if if somebody is asking me to make a call on something that I don't have enough knowledge on to make a call on it. You want me to still make that call?
We're talking about in the overall scope of. Providing or handing out COs. I think the fact is, the knowledge that we don't know. It's just as ground, just as much grounds as if we knew and it wasn't adequate. I think those are, those are synonymous.
Well, I, in my particular case, as an engineer, when an engineer has a lack of information to the point to where they can't make a call. They don't make a call at all until they get enough information to make a call.
Please continue to go one through eight, and then we can start talking about something.
Storm sewer pipes are showing to be eight inches, uh and 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 not, this is not a compliance issue.
Right, I'm not even talking about, I'm not even talking about compliance or. I'm talking about severity.
I think from a severity standpoint, that's a very low. Their pipes are eight inches versus twelve inches. Uh pump front detention pond appears to be undersized. At this particular part, because that detention pond was built to deal with nine buildings versus three. If that pump's a little undersized to deal with nine, I still think it can deal with three. Okay, but now you shouldn't put a pump in that that you know at some point it's gonna be undersized, but at this particular point. If they installed the pump that's on the drawings, and they only have three buildings out there, I think they're fine. Discharger out from the depend, from, for the detention pond discharge is not shown. That's an issue. Where's the water going? That that, that's an issue. That 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 would cause concern.
That that high concern, is that, like, what is the the severity if?
So so there's two ways to deal with drainage issues when you don't know. You go out there on a Wednesday like it was last Wednesday, and you see. Real life example. The real life example, building one, two, north, three flooded. Now, they they haven't shown where that water's going, but in the absence of of them demonstrating, showing, and us having knowledge. You can always go out there and see it for yourself. Okay, so so I, so in the, in the case, in this particular case where we've been able to see the runoff. In real life situations, I would say this is a low issue as well.
But there's a potential for higher.
Yeah, I, yeah, if you get fifty-two inches like Harvey, you probably got an issue. And I don't know what we got the other day, I don't know what, how many inches that was the other night, but it was a lot.
But if you get a fifty-two inch like Harvey, it really doesn't matter, does it? Because Houston flooded totally.
Right, right. Uh some sanitary sewer callouts are overlapping with drainage area lines. Which, which makes the flow lines not, so again, this is the maps that they sent us, the drawings that they sent us. They were just not legible. Water sewer utility sheets cannot be reviewed and the callouts not being legible. So you got this stuff that's not legible on these drawings, that we really need better drawings. If they become legible and it turns out that you got some sort of cross contamination between your water and your sanitary sewer, it's a big issue. We don't know. And then number eight is the one that we talked about earlier, so.
So in this process, right, so right now, if you look at what you provided, you go to chapter fourteen, it's no pages on here. Zoning, uh Article Six Performance Standards under Stormwater Management, Detention of Excess Run, uh Stormwater Runoff. Section six point zero nine point zero one. It states what needs to happen. You said currently, right now, there is no plans for that, right? So I don't understand when you say that there's, that that's, it's low, or it's not impacted, when I'm reading in black and white. But then you say that they don't have that listed, which when, so so our ordinances or or the chap- chapter fourteen. Um section six point zero nine, speaking to that under so- stormwater management, in your report. Speaks to what you're saying does not currently exist on the drawings, and you can't tell if they're in compliance. So right now, it's not on the drawings, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so if if we have this saying that this is what it should be. You're also telling us it doesn't matter, but we have it written, written, and for a reason.
Well, the drawings need to be corrected. We have been asking for that for a while, and the absence of those drawings being corrected, um you you know, it, the question is, where is the water going?
And so my question, right, and so my question is, why would we give them a certificate of occupancy? Until we get the documents that we've been requesting for months? That's what I'm saying, and so I'm simply asking. That under, so under D, or no, it's not D, yeah, it's been issued. Certificate has been issued for buildings one, two and three, Mister Mayor?
Uh one and two.
One and two?
Is it a temporary CO or a final CO?
No, they're final COs.
How do you do a final CO when you?
Cause it says okay to issue a CO, it didn't say okay to issue a temporary CO. When the buildings are checked, they're up, they're safe structurally, the conversation with the engineer falls right on with what Mister. Underwood is sharing with us, there's one issue on item number eight, and when that's done, but it had nothing to do with safety on these buildings. They've been inspected by the people that council directed Bureau Veritas to inspect, and you directed Bureau Veritas. To tell me when COs were approved, you're looking at the document. Until things are corrected. This is what you're looking at from Bureau Veritas.
So where's the engineer report?
The engineer report, in a sense you just heard. I spoke to Mister Peters, and I got Mister Peters, based on what he was saying, there were a couple of minor issues over there. And nothing to interfere with issuing the CO, and that's what happened.
That's not what you said before you left, Mister Mayor. Hold up, Mister Mayor. Before you left, you stated that. Mister Peters said. But Mister Peters said that it was okay for for citizens to move in. You said that you was gonna go get us that report, and that you got it from everyone that we approved for you to go through. So where's the, Mister Peters?
No, I told you that I was gonna go see, and and Councilman Monroe and I talked about, could we print up the report? That's Bureau Veritas. Trilogy, we don't have access to Trilogy's system to print up a report. I went to see if I could find this on my email, thank goodness I could. There's a en- there's an engineer report. We just ran out, Miss Tiswell, Miss Miss Tisdale. Can you uh print something I sent to you, cause we ran out of toner in the main one? And it has to do with the uh, it's a one pager. From an engineer, yes.
Oh, I said from our engineer.
Well, I spoke to our engineer, and we have their engineer writing.
Our engineer brings everything to us, I I mean, Mister Underwood, have you guys changed your process and what you don't provide writing when you guys? Okay, so with that being said, we don't have anything in, in, Mister Mayor, wh- what is our process? We say that engineer has has to sign off on it, has to say that it's okay, then you know we go through the process of the building, then Bureau Veritas. We continue to skip steps here.
And ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I didn't interrupt you. Okay, we just received. From the head engineer. A very detailed report of the engineer that we don't have. You want a report? What do you think you just went through? Item number eight, and Mister Underwood, let me ask you, in 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 front of council. Is item number eight, based on whatever it is, cause I really don't know all what it is. And and you went over there, you said there was no issues with those three buildings or something. Is that, in your experience, in and of itself, a issue? To keep folks from getting a certificate of occupancy?
He just said that wasn't his job.
No, I mean, is it, is it?
It's not in compliance, it's not in compliance, it's it's not, it's not in compliance, but it's not a major hazard, he would have thirty of them.
We had the process with, right, we had a process with Panther Hill that was, that you didn't follow. We came back and got the engineer from the beginning to go through Campus Edge. And so the question about, you don't, so the approval process, just like you brought us documentation. Did Trilogy give you in documentation saying that it was okay to op- to move forward with. Okaying buildings one, two and three? Do you have that documentation?
Trilogy doesn't issue those.
I didn't say issue, I s- I s- They do, that's give you a write-up. Trilogy gives, gives a write-up like they've done for the gas station, like they've done for every other development. They they have a write-up, and so if we're saying this is the write-up, then that's fine, but but this write-up had been done two months ago. You said you met with Mister David Peters on Friday. On, since Friday, today is Monday. Do you have a letter from him, from their company, saying that they are saying, because right now, just like he says, he can't make that call. The question is, they have a professional license, just like, so Panther Hill, we didn't have this opportunity. Are they saying that they they're okay, the building, what they had to inspect, of letting people move in that building? That's what we want, the letter coming from their company, saying it. And so the question is, uh do we just, uh do we just re- reduce the? How many people have moved, not a lot of people moved in, we can just take out, take the CO? We have, we can do that right now.
Based on what? You just, you just got a report. Hold on, he just said item eight is not a material issue.
He said it's not in compliance, and it's not a major hazard. Meaning that it's not a hazard, but, and it's not in compliance.
Okay, Council, Councilman Randall's.
So two things, while you were in the back of giving the copies, which we appreciate you going to get the copy. Mister Underwood stated that there are, there are things that are listed here, that they don't have adequate information to make a, to make a. Judgment decision on, and so the discussion of why you were going, is not having information, is similar to it being failed information. It should be handled similar to not knowing if it's adequate, it's just, it's just like it's being inadequate. That's uh phase one, so just because. These things are listed on here, these, a lot of this, a couple of these things he said, we just don't have, we don't have the information. So why, for one, why would we, why would we give a CO on something that we don't have information on? That's rhetorical question. My second point is, uh.
I am now, you have the report now, I was emailing to you to see. I'm I'm reading our report as I'm sitting here. Uh I can read it to you, it's it's three paragraphs.
Uh my second question is.
So what the report says is that, and this was a report asked of us to look at the storm sewer systems. It says that, based on the above, it it says two things. It mentions the silk screen fences that we talked about. They actually went out and 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 observed seventeen inlets, none of the seventeen had silk screen fences. Four of them had debris in front of them. But then it goes down to say, those inlets are operating properly, even though the silk screen fences are heightened.
I remember my question.
So does it say that Charles got it, that Charles?
So, yeah, uh Mayor, you were copying on me, this was sent to Miss Cortez, it was sent to Miss Cortez.
Okay, Councilman Randall?
Yeah, my question goes, it goes to the process, right, so, uh you know, council requested this information. Uh you went and pulled us the inspection report from Bureau Veritas. My question is, is our pro- has our process changed? Whether it's not one documentation, or all of the signatures would be prior to issuing a CO, because when we say, hey. I'm issuing a CO, it was not understanding it was a document that every entity signs off on, and. And so when I, when we say, hey, where's the documentation that says this place is ready to have a CO? You can go pull one document that has all of the signatures of the experts on it, so do we not follow that process anymore, or is the process different? Can you speak to, speak to that?
Sure, we've never had such a document, so. And, and, hold, hold, hold on. You have a report from the engineer, and I would, I would imagine, uh your engineer David Peters. Was the one that was more on the memo that was sent to Mister Underwood? As as the primary engineer going to the project, he was involved.
Was that your question?
Yes, sir, in the memo that was sent, that we just received. Okay, and. Just, 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 just for the record, um and, I'm Mister Underwood, follow me, cause there's a couple of things on there. As you just said, the uh, the inlets were working properly and all that, all the inspected inlets were. Drained and none held water. Uh based on this initial inspection, the drainage for the first buildings, one, two and three is working correctly. Due to our inability to inspect the detention pond, and that's the back of one of the detention pond. Trilogy was not able to confirm any of the aspects. Trilogy was not able to confirm any of the aspects associated with the detention pond. But they're saying everything over there is working correctly and you're saying that, now, now wait now, y'all asked me for the engineer's report?
He just read, he read it, but he didn't read, he didn't read nothing about the detention, he talked about the S W P P and the inlets. And so before you were gone, we were talking about, like Councilman Wallace said. We, we are looking at the last half inch. The question under section six point zero nine, stormwater management, detention of excess stormwater runoff. That is communicated in our ordinance. The question is, if we're saying, read right now on number two in his report. He says he doesn't have enough information to make a determination. For months, we have not got the information, just that alone is enough to not approve it, so what else are we trying to find? The letter you, that, the letter that Mr. Underwood just read, talked about number eight. But on number two, where, where we, where this information in reference to. Detention of excess stormwater runoff, you cannot put up a development and impact someone else is the same issue that they have with Waller. Right now, he's requested that, he hasn't received it in months. The question is, why are we trying to look at all these other things with, that we need to approve? When all, all we have to do is, is, is on number, excuse me, I said number two.
Number eight.
I meant number, uh. Three. Uh, under the, uh, debris, no, the debris is what he talked about. Um, I'm talking detention was number.
Number eight?
No, number four. Number four, number five. Number five actually isn't, but number four and number five gives us everything we need to talk about. The discharge route for the detention discharge is not shown. First, that's the first thing that should be on the plans. We've requested that at the, uh, two months ago. We don't have it, so while, and, and then in our or- in section six point zero nine speaks to the detention of excess stormwater runoff. So is that something that, so what, what is that in there for, uh, Mr. Underwood? I mean, what, so based upon what you have for number four and what you have for number five?
Yep.
The discharge route of detention discharge is not shown, is that something that is a requirement to be shown?
Yes.
Okay, and by you not seeing it or it not being shown, have you made several attempts to get the information?
Yes.
Okay, so what else do we need? What, what else do we need, we, that, right, that right there, we can withdraw the certificate of o- occupancy. We, we've drawn, how many people have moved in, Mr. Mayor?
I don't know, I don't keep up with how many.
On that. So, uh, attorney, as you, as you've heard. We can, we, so the engineer answered the question, or do I need to ask, do I need to read section E?
Well, so, so what I believe I'm hearing from the engineer is that there are no approved civil drawings on this site.
The drawings are not complete.
So they have not been approved by the city?